...their attorney to find out the process for condemnation or eminent domain action in regard to the, a permanent easement of the walkway behind the Fort Knox Inn. I've done that and the paperwork for that is here, which is, the process is that a notice is posted for seven days in four public places, two of them adjacent to the property in question, and then in two other public places, one will be here, one will be at the post office. Those, if you vote, that notice will allow people to attend the hearing on the 15th, to, at which time the council would make a decision on whether or not it does the taking of that property and if they, you vote on that on the 15th and do so, it then is recorded in the registry of deeds.
Motion approved.
Second?
We have a motion seconded to adopt or resolve our 2017-72 to post a notice of hearing of the town council's intention to meet on Thursday, June 15, 2017, at 7:30 PM at the Bucksport Town Office to consider the laying out and taking of a permanent easement for public recreation. Anything further from the public? From the council? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion passes.
Okay, hold on. These four copies need to be signed by Kathy. These four copies are what, are then posted in these four public, and the poster then signs where they were and signs off that they were done. Okay, if you'll just pass this down to Kathy.
Is the chief the poster?
The chief's the poster, but the, the chief is here for the next item on the agenda, which we're waiting for Representative Campbell to get here from Augusta with his stuff. So, that's why we're, we kind of moved things around a little bit because he said he was...
Okay, item three is presentation of any...
He said he was coming, but he was coming from Augusta.
Item three is presentation of any town council recognitions, and that's what we're waiting for, Mr. Campbell for. So, we'll go on to item four, consider minutes of previous meetings.
I didn't give you any of this.
Okay. Item five is receive and review correspondence and documents, first one being Oliver Associates' for the weekly reports. Susan?
Yes, we have the May 26 and June 2 weekly reports that outline the work that continues to be done at that site. I had hoped that by this time we would have the results of the line testing and cleaning behind, that goes from Hannaford out behind those properties, but the company that's doing that couldn't do it until during June, so it'll be July before I have that information in regard to whether or not that line was simply filled with sediment as opposed to having any breaks or cracks in it.
Any questions from the council? Okay, we'll go on to item B is MMA Safety Enhancement Grant Award to the Fire Department.
I'm pleased to announce that the Fire Department has applied for a grant for the purchase of three cold water rescue suits, three life vests and five rope throw bags. The total amount of the grant is $1,993.33. The Fire Department, the Police Department are regular applicants to this safety grant program and by doing so, they get needed equipment for the community and the cost is minimal to taxpayers.
Is there any matching funds in that grant?
One-third.
One-third.
One-third, okay.
Does that come out of reserve? Is that where that's coming from?
Regular budget.
Have you heard anything back at all about the possibility of getting those two other positions?
No.
Okay. Is there a deadline on when that's going to be announced, or?
Set by the federal government, yeah.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Well, there's nothing going on down there, so I'm sure there...
First on the list, I hope so.
All right, we'll go on to item six, new ordinances to be considered or introduced. To introduce an emergency ordinance called Extension of the Town of Bucksport's Monatorium on Retail Marijuana Establishments and Retail Marijuana Social Clubs, adopted on January 26, 2017. Somebody from the ordinance committee want to talk about this?
This is just an extension that was required by law or allowed us to extend it for another 180 days until the state figures out what they're going to do with the law that was passed. So, this is basically housekeeping, extending what we've already done.
So, both.
Second?
We motioned and seconded to introduce an emergency ordinance titled Extension of the Town of Bucksport's Monatorium on Retail Marijuana Establishments and Retail Marijuana Social Clubs. Anything further from the public? From the council? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion passes. Item seven, discussion items, manage the clarification and direction or council discussions or inputs on issues. First one being LED projects, Town Office, Public Safety and Waterfront. Susan?
The Finance Committee tonight is going to report on this next, but the, we had a, an evaluation done of this building, the Public Safety Building and the waterfront lights, to look at the cost of retrofitting the fixtures to LED in both Public Safety and here, and also obtaining night sky adapters for the waterfront lights so that they're not a halo anymore, but they're directing light downward as well as using LED lighting. And there is a significant rebate on the fixtures part of this, the, an almost $8,000 cost for fixtures for this building is rebated, so the out-of-pocket cost for fixtures is $1,758. And the, the, out of, the initial cost for fixtures at Public Safety is almost $16,000, and that's rebated down to approximately $4,500 net cost for equipment. That is, that doesn't include the cost of a certified electrician that's on efficiency mains approved installation list to do the installation, but the, the, which would add a cost to both that's not rebateable. But the, the savings in electric usage from the conversion to LED shows a, a one-year repayment in, at Public Safety and a 1.5-year rebate for equipment, for the equipment to do it, not for the, the electrician, the cost of the electrician. There is sufficient money in Public Safety Building Reserve and Town Office Building Reserve to front the cost of fixtures and an electrician and then have the rebate come back into those accounts for reserve, because the other thing that would happen is that your annual appropriation for, for budgeting for electricity for these buildings, which is already done in this case, would leave some left over in, significantly left over in both accounts if you did it right off the bat. The, what would be necessary would be, if you decided to move forward, would, would be to authorize me to go out with a request for proposals from electricians to do the type of installation necessary and then award that and move forward with these projects. We've ordered four of the night sky converters for the waterfront to see how they work because the, we were looking at, at, if we were to replace these current lamp posts, it's $600 to $800 a lamp post for LED with night sky. And the conversion of these, the, if we buy 60 of these, it's $68 a unit to do, to do the night sky conversion, and the bulb is $50 to $60, but there's a rebate on the, on the LED bulb itself. So, for approximately $100 a thing instead of $600 or $700 a unit, we could have the walkway have a different lighting system that is more geared downward and would address the concerns of Mr. Kenny of the Street, for example, who has some, one of them has some blinder thing on one side, but that really doesn't solve the problem. It doesn't direct the light in a way that's useful and it just kind of, so, and it's, the council has been discussing improvements to the waterfront lighting, and this is the most cost-effective that we have been able to have made at this time. So, the, at the end of the day, this, the question is whether or not I have permission to seek an electrician to move forward with looking at these projects.
How the council like to proceed?
Motion approved.
I would just like to say that when we talked about it was, the, the folks that are going to supply the fixtures, we're getting heck of a price on those again, like she said, with a rebate, and then we have to go out and get this electrician, so I think Susan was asking for, be able to put up a bid for the electrician at the time, and we would buy the fixtures ourselves through the town.
Okay.
I'll second the motion.
So, was that the motion?
Sounds great.
To get, call for electrician?
Correct.
Okay. Okay, you made the motion and Peter, Peter seconded it, and you get to change in that, Kathy? Okay. Anything further from the public on this? From the council? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion passes. Yeah, I'm going to finish up item seven here. Mr. Campbell has, has arrived, and we'll go back to that after we finish up this. First one being Finance Committee update?
You just heard it.
Just heard it, that's what I thought. Item C is Ordinance Committee update?
We just took care of that with the extensions, one thing, and then we also were still working on chapter two in the town code.
Okay. And item D, Streets and Roads?
Yes, we'd like to set up a resolve for the next council meeting, and our meeting was about proposed parking spaces on Main Street, and there were six parking spaces in front of, near Sawyer's Auto Sales. And the, they met with, a few people met with DOT and they've kind of given their, their approval on those parking spaces with a few adjustments to the size, sizes of the middle parking spots, could be slightly larger. And we, they've also talked to the owner at Sawyer's and that they seem to, the only concern they had was as far as long-term parking there, so our suggestion is to add signage to that area for a two-hour parking availability. And that's our proposal for that section. Now, we also, a gentleman has suggested to help with a payment in the installation of a electric car charging station in a parking lot just slightly down near the House Pizza, which we own as well. And so, those two proposals, we'd like to put onto the agenda as a resolve for next council meeting with your, with everybody's approval.
Okay, now, this electric parking space will actually be on the road?
It is in the parking lot that's...
Okay, okay.
I guess it used to be dirt, but now it is tarred.
Didn't you say actually attached to his building?
Yeah.
Right, right by his building. No cost to the, no cost to the town.
Is that where they used to dump the iron ore from Blue Hill in train cars? Okay, yeah, okay.
Make a motion. Second?
We have a motion seconded to approve the recommendations from the Streets and Roads Committee for additional parking on Main Street. Anything further from the public? From the council?
The, the reason I wanted to do the resolve at the next council meeting, in case somebody had comments or questions, they could come and talk about it then, so.
Okay, this is, this isn't actually adopting a resolve, just put the resolve on, okay. Okay, so we don't, do we need a motion for that? Really do we?
Not unless someone has an objection to including it on the next...
Okay, are we, we're doing the painting though of the, of the parking?
Yes, we've been. Creating new spaces.
Okay, looking forward to that resolve at the next, at the next meeting. Okay, that's the end of item seven. We'll go back up to item three, presentations of any town council recognitions. First one being Representative Campbell doing a legislative sentiment presentation.
Thank you, Campbell. Sorry I'm late. I found that coming across from three to here or interstate is probably quicker to go interstate. A little extra traffic on one. But thank you for having me, I'm sorry I'm late. Before I get into both the recognitions and the Bucksport Day in Augusta, just wanted to give you a brief update. First, I can promise there won't be a state shutdown, contrary to some of those who out there like to capitalize on things that may and may not, may not happen. In terms of the budget, things that you'd probably be most interested in is, you know, revenue sharing and the school budget, education. There were actually four reports that came out of the committee initially, and they continued, the appropriations committee, they continue to keep working, but it was interesting, the, the third, three reports, Republican House Caucus Report, the Senate Report, and then the Democrat Report. In terms of dollars, I think the Democrat Report was somewhere in the $7.3 billion range. The, I think the Senate Report is $7.05 billion, and I think the House Report is just a little under $7, 69, five-ish. And then there was a fourth report, individuals whose name you probably recognize, John Martin decided he'd bring his own report out, and it was ought not to pass. So, he was quite concerned that people weren't getting together. The caucus report this morning mentioned that we're about the same place we were six weeks ago. And it's, it's all about posturing. We obviously know that the budget has to be passed now, because there's no option for a simple majority budget, and enacted, signed by the governor and enacted by July 1st. So, time's ticking down. Looks like it probably will occur sometime between Friday afternoon and Sunday early morning. In terms of school funding, see if I can remember this, I think the, the Democrat Report is looking at somewhere in the $300 million more. The Senate Republican is 100, and actually, the, the Democrat is 252-ish over two years. I think it's split evenly. The House Republican Report is $9 million the first year and $14.5 the second year with education reform, hoping to pick up some savings. So, and then we have referendums. We've got a lot of different referendums that we're dealing with. One most significantly is the marijuana referendum that's thrown the state government into a total spin. We usually have a 13-member joint committee in each, on behalf of each of the departments, and this one especially for this legislative session is 17 in the constantly meeting. It affects every department in the state main. Just a bad way to, to process the people's business or public policy, just terrible. There were two that we're dealing with that probably will get the most action. Here's question two, it's 3%. I believe that's probably gone. They're looking to fund education in different ways. The other one, minimum wage, it looks like, well, the Senate passed within one vote of an emergency measure, repeal of the tip credit. The House is, it's tabled, waiting for passage, and it is expected to pass with enough to make, to add an amendment for emergency measure. So, once it gets back to the Senate, you know, people are working on a couple of votes to make sure when it is passed, it doesn't wait 90 days for the season, and there'll be a measure, emergency measure, once signed by the governor, it will become law. Again, beyond that, any questions that I might answer?
The, we're not anywhere close to the 55% that the state's supposed to provide for local schooling, are we? Do you know what the percentage is?
It's a matter of how you calculate it.
Yeah.
Early on, the 55% may or may not have included the unfunded liability. Now it does. Some are trying to separate it, some, there's a lot of moving parts on 55%. I suspect not, but most of the talk in, in Augusta is 55% of what? Education costs are going up. I don't know what the numbers of students were, but 250,000 at one point. Now it closes in at 155. So, you know, enrollment is going down, costs are going up. I think the education reforms trying to help that, to try and spend money more wisely. I know I had to bill in to repeal probably about 30 or 40 regulations that the superintendents had identified as costing too much or not necessary. In talking with them, I, they had me pull the bill because we were working on a report that was 13, 14, and now they've got a new report and wanted a time to work on that, to identify what we, what regulations we have imposed on, on education that's increased their costs, but they hadn't really gotten to a point where we could process that through education. The Education Committee has been working really hard on reform. I don't know what shape it's going to take, as I don't know what shape the budget's going to take. It's, they're all moving parts, and there are probably about six different areas that haven't been addressed, but I suspect there won't be the full 55%. It really hasn't been since it passed. Different administrations have, have tried, but they've all failed, so.
The referendum on voter averaging or whatever it's called?
Rank choice.
Rank choice.
I think that was deemed pretty much unconstitutional, and I think that probably won't have any impact. I think that's going away.
I thought it was only one part of it that was unconstitutional. Does that throw the entire referendum out?
That's none of my committee, but I think it's, I, I think you'll be okay with it.
I think the question was whether or not it, you were able to use that ranked choice on, in federal elections, wasn't that the issue? Not state, but...
Yeah, but I, my sense is that's, that's going away. I can't, I'm not an expert.
So, you're not here to give us a check for education?
Well, you'll, you'll get an increase, but it's a matter of if it's this much or this much. Yeah, and, and the fact that we are waiting until now to get a budget, we know it's, it's an imposition on, on your work, but unfortunately, I think that's the way it's, it's going to be. When I was there, '92 to 2000, we always, well, not always, at one point, especially early in, in my, my service, it was always the last minute, looking for that 101 votes. I, I did happen to be there with a, for a simple majority budget, but that was interesting.
Any questions? No, thank you.
Well, thank you. Thank you very much. First of all, I, I'd just like to report, most of you were there, but on, what was the date? The 16th of May. I was fortunate enough to be able to bring Bucksport to, to Augusta and, and explain to those who serve from all over the state that a little town on the Bonhams Court can do very well, even losing 40-plus percent of their, their income with a mill closing. And I was really pleased to see the showing. Everybody seemed to have a good time. I'm hoping that what we did made you proud, it made me and us proud to be able to talk to the legislature who's constantly complaining about so many bad things, especially mill closings, and, and show that in three short years, you can turn it around completely. I do have, I'll be honest, a few of these, for those of you who weren't there, this was a, this was something that I had circulated on the floor of the House, if I remember, I had a copy, but just a little something that I put together with the help of the manager and other, other people's input, but we led with the enterprise front page, closing, and then proceeded to talk about the Bucksport Verso Mill Closed, but, and then Bucksport's community spirit explodes. And then proceeded to get some of the things that have impressed me, inside top two photos, right and left, on the left panel, we believe in Bucksport. The church banner and Bucksport Strong. It just shows that a small town who, who runs it well, and, you know, we kind of went through this debate two years ago with Southern Sevier. No one believed that a town would 20 years ago talk about, well, we think you're paying too many taxes, why don't you help us decide how much taxes you... And then a few years prior to that, say, well, we still think you're paying too many taxes, let's reduce it a little bit. So, here's a town in Maine that didn't get greedy, but understood that was an important part of the history of Bucksport, but also, you know, what's actually happened in other towns where the municipalities drove the taxes up and they left. Bucksport didn't do that. So, that's one of the reasons we were able to, you know, in spite of the governor's veto, get the passage of Southern Sevier for school funding. But it just kind of puts in the perspective on two panels what Bucksport has been able to do in three years. So, without saying any more or capitalizing on the time, I, I just want to tell you how proud I am and honored it is to serve you, and how proud it was to have you in Augusta so we could show how it's done.
Thank you.
I do have the calendar, so I don't know if you have someplace to archive that, but...
Joe, you got any extra safe and pass model to the people in the crowd?
So, also, we were able to recognize on the back panel of that, those who did attend. And it was nice, we had David Gross and coaches and jazz combo band, unified basketball coaches, robotics coaches, and public officials in, in the hall of the House when we're able to, to speak of it. And just a note, I guess... And just a note, I guess, generally when, when people speak on the floor of the House, they sometimes empty the body, and people just kind of get up and walk out. And you can tell if they're listening or not. I don't know how, you found it in, in the balcony, but I found we had their attention. And, you know, it kind of drove it home when we talked about the way you're handling municipal waste and recycling. You know, the fact that you bought a tractor for twelve thousand dollars and haul your own trash. You know, that just isn't what happens in municipalities around. They always get the biggest and best and the most expensive trucks, and it's just a, a great example of how Bucksport has managed the town, so. Thank you for the opportunity to serve you. So now, and everybody was there, but everyone left before I could hand out the certificate. So, I was fortunate to come to the school and, and hand those out, but if we have the two chiefs, we'd like to have you come up and receive yours. So, do one at a time? No, you're over here. Okay, I got a bad eye over here, so you got... So, on behalf of the legislature, we have special sentiments that were on that calendar, and generally read, but where we had so many representing Bucksport, I wasn't able to speak to each one individually, so. These are special sentiments that appear on the calendar, that are generally awards for outstanding, and in this case, outstanding. State of Maine, be it known to all that we, the members of the Senate and House of Representatives, join and recognize Bucksport Police Chief Sean Gaggen of Bucksport, who received the Maine Chiefs of Police Association Life Saving Award in two thousand and sixteen. We extend to Chief Gaggen our congratulations, best wishes, and be it ordered that this official expression of sentiment be sent forth with, on behalf of the one-hundred-and-twenty-eighth legislature and the people of the state of Maine, signed by the President of the Senate and the Speaker of the House. And then, again, state of Maine, be it known to all that we, the members of the Senate and the House of Representatives, join in recognizing Bucksport. Fire Chief Greg Bowden of Bucksport, who received the American Red Cross Real Heroes Award, the Maine Chiefs of Police Association Art of Bravery Award in two thousand and sixteen, and the state, Maine State Police Citation for Bravery in two thousand and sixteen. We extend to Chief Bowden our congratulations and best wishes, and be it ordered that this official expression of sentiment be sent forth with, on behalf of the one-hundred-and-twenty-eighth legislature and the people of the state of Maine, signed by the President of the Senate and the Speaker of the House. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Sorry I was late.
Thank you.
We're going to go back down to number eight, agenda items. Agenda item B, to adopt resolve R two thousand and seventeen dash seventy-three to sell surplus equipment to the highest bidder for the JCB Skidsteer and a John Deere Gator. Susan.
The, these are two pieces of equipment that we, the Gator, we replaced, you remember, a couple meetings ago. And so that was put out to bid, and the Skidsteer, which we'll no longer need based on the sidewalk plow that we bought, that has that capability. And so we put out to bid, and we got significant number of bids on, on both. The high bidder for the JCB Skidsteer was HD Truck Sales for eleven thousand eight hundred and one dollar, and for the Gator, Leslie Spalding for eleven hundred and fifty dollars. The recommendation is to award those to the highest bidder. The Skidsteer sale funds would be used to reduce the financing cost of that plow from the eighty-six down to approximately seventy-five for the three-year lease purchase that was discussed. That, that would be the use of that. And the, the Gator was purchased from Recreation Equipment Reserve, and that would return to that reserve fund.
Motion to approve?
Second.
We have motion and a second to approve the resolve as stated. Anything further from the public? From the council? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion passes? Go on to item nine, resignations, appointments, assignments, or elections. Kathy, do you have anything to report on the election for next Tuesday?
No, other than it opens at seven, eight a.m. and closes at eight p.m. At the Jewett School. We have the school budget, and we also have a state referendum question, the bond question.
Thank you. Okay, item ten, approval of quick claim deeds or discharges. I don't believe we have any, do we? If not, we'll go on to item eleven, Town Managers' Report. Susan?
The department head reports are in this packet. Everyone takes time to read them, they're pretty interesting. As to mine for this time, I spent the majority of last week with our auditors, who came, who come in prior to year end, every year into the pre-audit. It went well. It was a busy time, but they'll be back again in August to finish up, but they come in and do all the pre-work and testing. And so that was, that consumed a good deal of time last week. I'll be speaking at an event at the Lighthouse Art Studio on Friday, June sixteenth, that is sponsored by the Maine Development Foundation. I was asked to speak about Bucksport and its story, from the closure of the mill to today. Main Street Bucksport Coordinator Brooke Minner is also a speaker at this event. Representatives from Main Street groups all over the state and communities looking to start such a program will be in attendance. And I think that Brooke also emailed new council members for this. It's a, it's a good opportunity to, interestingly enough, since the sixteenth, when we were in Augusta and did that, I, I've had several entities call and ask me if I would come and speak to their group from, one is in Livermore Falls on the nineteenth, and then this group on the sixteenth. So, people who have heard Bucksport's story want to hear more about it, so I think that's positive for us. Rich Rotella and I met with Jeff McGlynn on Tuesday of this week to discuss progress at the former mill site. Phase two of the deconstruction is essentially complete. The fate of the remaining partially deconstructed buildings, one being what supports the power line cable, cable, and the other just adjacent to the biomass, their fate will be determined before year end, depending on development possibilities that AIM is currently considering. The piles of crushed material are also awaiting distribution, depending on where on the site they need to be located to accommodate development, rather than put them in one place and then have to locate them in another. The plan is for the dedication of the Tim Emery Municipal Pool to take place on Saturday, June twenty-fourth. Guns and hoses will be providing hot dogs and drinks for the occasion, and the final time for that event on that day will be determined by the beginning of next week. We're trying to coordinate it with the race, and that is also happening that day, which many of the people who do that swim in the pool after. And so if we coordinate it that toward the end, we'll have more people who are already coming there. So, that's my report.
Question? Back, back to item two on the AIM update. Where are we with all the, is the ground testing all done now for the...
Okay, they're in, they're, the EPA grant, we're doing interviews for the consultant on Tuesday of this, of this coming week for that grant. A second hundred-and-twenty-five thousand dollar grant has been received for technical assistance through EPA. That's totally done by EPA. Phase one environmental study was done and completed prior. Phase two environmental is in process right now with AIM and Richard...
Richard Campbell?
Campbell, yes. Are, are the ones who are, he's working on that. They've done testing on the site and, and a number of assessments in different places. And the good news is thus far, they're, they're just not finding what...
Excellent.
Things of concern. But phase two is environmental, you know, we, we had a phase one, now there's phase two. That is in process at this time, too.
Obviously, they can't share any specifics, but are we getting word there's a fair number of inquiries about the site still? Is there any...
There are, there's one entity that's currently having engineering work done to determine a location there, and is also working with financing for that. It's an entity, I guess it's phrase that they go beyond the tire kicker stage, once they start spending money to assess location on the site, and, and that is, and there are a couple of other ones that, that AIM is working with that are possibilities. Certainly, my hope is within the next six months that we have an announcement of the first thing to, that may try and move forward in that sense.
So I guess you've sort of answered the sentence in there, it says, depending on development possibilities that AIM is currently considering. But we don't have any more specifics on that at this time, is that right?
That's correct. But the, the, the answer to the question, and I've had it a number of times, as to what about the stuff that's not done, is that before year end, that will be resolved.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, if not, we're going to go on to item twelve, set public hearings or hold public hearings and approve of any licenses or permits. First one being a liquor license renewal for William H. Carrier doing business as carriers mainly lobsters. How would the council like to proceed?
Motion to approve? Second?
We have motion and a second to approve the liquor license for William H. Carrier, carriers mainly lobster. Anything further from the public? From the council? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion passes? Item B, liquor license renewal for David S. Weiss, doing business as Northeast Historical Films. How would the council like to proceed?
Motion to approve? Second?
We have motion and a second to approve the liquor license for David Weiss and Northeast Historical Films. Anything from the public? From the council? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion passes? The final one being liquor license renewal for Michael and Colleen Gross, doing business as Verona Wine and Design. How would the council like to proceed?
Second?
We have motion and a second to liquor license for Michael and Colleen Gross, doing business as Verona Wine and Design. Anything further from the public? From the council?
I had a, citizens that had a question about if, at that facility, the wine was served outside or not, and that was kind of concerned. I'm not sure if it is allowed outside or not.
If you take a look at these licenses, there's two licenses for them. One is to serve outside, and one is to serve inside.
The concern was if, if it was going to cause, as far as children being able to see such, such...
They, I don't know if they do it on the side, if there's anything on the side, but they have a nice patio area out in the back.
Okay, perfect.
They have a retail operation inside, and then they have a, also, kind of like a restaurant and an outside patio, where they serve on-site.
And that's where it's legal there, but not outside.
Yep. Any other questions from the council? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion passes? Okay, that's it. We'll go on to discussion items, not on the agenda for the council.
We got another one?
Yeah. Okay. Okay, we do have a innkeeper's license for David Weider at Williams Pond Lodge Bed and Breakfast.
Motion to approve? Second?
We have motion and a second to approve the innkeeper's license for David Weider at Williams Pond Lodge Bed and Breakfast. Anything from the public? From the council? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion passes? Thank you. All right.
Yes. The moratorium extension ordinance requires a public hearing, so that needs to be sent this evening.
Okay.
We have a meeting scheduled for the fifteenth, the, which doesn't allow enough time to post a public hearing for that, for the moratorium ordinance, which expires on the twenty-ninth of June. Our, our next council meeting, that you could post a hearing from if you don't hold another one in June, is July, whatever the second Thursday in July is. So, if we don't have another council meeting in June after the fifteenth, which we've already posted the, the eminent domain action for, then your current moratorium would expire, and you would, you would be extending it after the fifteenth.
Don't we talk about a June twenty-ninth meeting or something, the end of June?
We talked about that and had discussed not doing that, because we already had two meetings in June. But the other thing we could do is we could have a meeting on June twenty-second, that would give it enough, it's just a, a short meeting for the purpose of...
Having a public hearing?
Holding, for, holding a public hearing on this marijuana ordinance.
Can we fly you back for that? Oh, okay.
Well, you need to.
Yeah, we got to do something before it expires, right?
That's right. So if we did it on the twenty-second, we could, that would be three in a row, but it wouldn't have to be any other items on that agenda except that public hearing.
I will not be here for that one, so I'm okay with that.
You guys all set for another one on the twenty-second?
Sounds great.
Hopefully, it won't be a lot, a lot of other things on the agenda.
Do you want to do it at six instead of seven, since it's a one-item agenda, or do you want to...
Red Sox status seven.
I wasn't thinking of the Red Sox schedule, but...
Well, you should have been. Okay, a public hearing on the moratorium for the twenty-second at six p.m.
Jeff, that will work okay. There will be enough time to advertise.
Okay, getting back to item thirteen, discussion items, not on the agenda for the council or the public. I'll open it up to the public first. Any discussion items? Yes, sir.
Did I, missed something, or have you already approved the school budget? Is it, because that will vote the thirteenth, right?
Yeah, can you come up to podium, sir?
Has the school budget been approved? I mean, is it, we have to vote on that the thirteenth, right?
I think it is voting on the thirteenth, but they already had to vote at the school last week. That was my mistake.
Well, I was, I thought last year that it came to the council and that...
No. It'll go, it'll go to the public next Tuesday.
Right.
All four, all four communities that are part of the RSU will vote on it Tuesday. Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Mayor and councilors. I'm Nancy Minett, the coordinator for Bucksport Heart and Soul, and I just wanted to give you a quick update. I think in your packet, you'll find a written update, so that'll be great on, on what we're doing. I did want to just read aloud for the public also the quote, "We finished our four focus events on Sunday with our recreation in Bucksport event, which was held at the Jewett School. We had hoped to have a guided walk to the Vernal Pools at the high school, or some students plus Great Pond Mountain had collaborated on, but it was pouring rain at the end of that event, so we, although some, some Hardy Souls actually did walk. We, we had some, a really wonderful conversation about recreation in Bucksport, what people want, what they are engaged in for activities right now, and what they hope for the future." So that was our fourth focus, to understand what matters to people around given topics. In your, in the write-up that I, the report that I wrote, one from the... The report that I wrote, one from the newcomers event, which was, again, really exciting to sit and have conversation with people who have only lived in Bucksport for a year or less, discovering why they chose Bucksport at their home when they could have lived anywhere on the planet. And there are some really remarkable things about Bucksport that drew them here. And I would just like to read aloud the quote that I had in your packet. One woman who wants to become involved in Heart and Soul and volunteer and be a part of that said, "There were a couple of houses in Bucksport." And I went, "Okay, Bucksport. I can get to Bangor. I can get to the station, W-E-R-U," where she volunteers. "I lived in Hancock for 17 years and have good friends there and we're on the river. And then I started. I looked up the Chamber. I looked up the town groups and everything, and I thought, Bucksport, heart and soul. Oh, I am all over that because any town that cares enough to have a group, that cares what people love and what they are willing to let go of and what they want to welcome in, gosh, the core vibrancy of the community is intact. And I think that's a precious thing." And again, the town supported that and really brought that Bucksport Heart and Soul here so that, you know, there was an opportunity to get out and hear the voices of people. So thank you again. And I did thank Rob and David Key and almost Paul for interviews. Came in and we've interviewed and recorded their stories as to what matters to them and what they're hopeful in the future. And I would encourage all of you. We would love to have all of your voices. I've tried to call a few times some of you, and somebody's phone isn't the phone number that's on the thing anymore. And... Is that yours? Yes, Paul. Well, I figure cellphone now? Is that it? Yeah, yeah. But I do encourage you to call me at the center or my email, which is on your list also. But we also have an invitation that I've just posted around town today. By the end of June, we're hoping that our story gathering part of the project will be completed. That doesn't mean that the listening and the data compiling and all that will be finished, but we're hoping to have finished that phase of recording stories. So on Thursday, which is next Thursday, from 1:00 to 3:00 in the afternoon, we're inviting anyone that has not had an opportunity to come. It might take 10 minutes or 15 minutes. You just pop in any time during that if it works for you. We'll have some snacks. And on Monday, June 19th, from 5:30 to 7:30 p.m., we'll do that same thing. And we're getting in touch with some of the groups that haven't been represented yet. If you know younger people, we really feel the family, younger family demographic, we could do better with that in terms of getting that voice. But we hope we see you all there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. Just got that ham and a close game, lost by one. But just a couple of updates of what's going in town this weekend. Pixie Harbor Hoopla will be down on the waterfront this Sunday from 11:00 to 4:00. And this upcoming Wednesday brings the third season of Wednesdays on Main. The Frog... Frogtown Mountain Puppeteers will be in town. And last year, they sold out the Alamo, so get there early. And that's what I've got for you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, especially, there were a couple of kids that got turned away because it wasn't ... It was packed last year. So seriously, if you're a parent, particularly of small kids, they really enjoy it. Get there early so you'll have a seat.
Any other discussion items from the public? If not, any discussion items from the council? Yes, sir.
I had a citizen that was asking about the flags we have on Main Street and as far as if we need to set up something with Streets and Roads Committee to find out if maybe we could extend it to EBS down that far with the flags and if we were going to be able to put that on behalf of the town to purchase the flags and/or how that works. I'm not exactly sure. They counted the poles. Right now, there's 20 of them on Main Street itself. And to extend up to the EBS area would be 30 more for a total of 50. And that would be on every other pole, telephone pole.
I think at the present time, we don't have those flags up anymore. With the American... You talk to American flags?
Yes, yeah, yeah. And they were wondering about if we need to bring that up to a committee or not to find out if that's something of interest or...
Yeah, I think we need to discuss whether we're going to be putting those back up or not. I know the American Legion has all the flags that used to be on the poles. But there was an issue with the way they were mounted, that every time the wind blew, it wrapped up and got stuck on the telephone poles. And it was almost a full-time job unwrapping them all the time. So I don't know if there's some alternative to that, the way you hang them or the length of them.
Yeah, there's also... As far as, there's also rules to how a flag is presented outside as well.
Right.
So I don't know if putting it on a committee...
Neighboring towns around are only putting them up for a short period, like Memorial Day. They go up, they come down pretty quick.
And all those could be options.
They get tattered and wrapped around and so forth.
Some towns try to keep them up all year long, but...
We have them up all year long. And I actually had a couple people in town mention it. Veterans, obviously. And they were real impressed that we don't do it anymore. Felt that we should. You know, they can go to Bangor or on their way, see flag, you know, and their town doesn't. I think it's a great idea to have them. Granted, have them the right way and looking good, but I would be all for it.
Should we send that to a committee?
I think so. Because the gentleman said that he would help...
What if Streets and Roads would be the signage of...
Okay.
And schedule a committee meeting for that.
I think you need to investigate the angle and how long... I mean, maybe you could get them out there long enough so that even with the wind blowing, it wouldn't... What happens, it blows and you get the little pieces of wood to stick out on your telephone poles, and the flag hangs up on them.
Yeah.
Then you've got to... Somebody's got to go along and hopefully not rip them while you're trying to get them unstuck.
I don't know much about it, but is there a way... And this might be completely rude. Is there a way, like, some kind of starch or something that would keep them more of a rigid frame or something?
Maybe get some information from Streets and Roads Committee on that. Try to do some research.
If you're going to put them up, they should only be on lighted poles. There's a bunch of...
Yeah, in inclement weather, and they got a lot of stuff that...
But they have to be lit at night if they're on.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, so we're getting... Next item is committee assignment, so we'll...
Have a Streets and Roads committee.
Any other discussion items from the council?
I just want to say, I finally was unable to make the public things at the Lighthouse Arts. And I went down on Saturdays, walked around, just blew me away. I was just so amazed. If anybody hasn't been down there, it is just incredible. You just kind of... You look out the window and you say, "Is this Bucksport? This is Bucksport." You know, so it was great.
Well, and you know, one of my complaints is that when a new business opens, if the citizenry can't at least go in and say hello, that's pretty sad. So if you... You know, you've got to do your part. It's great to talk about, even if you don't buy anything. If you just go in and be supportive and look around. I think I would second what Rob said, because, you know, that's part of community building. And buy local, but at least go in and see new business and say, "Welcome to town," and that sort of thing. Doesn't take very long, does a lot of good. Thanks.
I believe this summer also, she's offering the patio out back for different bands to perform. I think Wednesday's on Main, and I also think the Mariner may be putting something on there also. So, you know, she is a...
They have a schedule of art classes. I got a schedule there. Unfortunately for me, I'm still working there during the day, so... But at some point, I want to discover my inner talents, and there's a variety of classes. I'm sure I have some.
Maybe it's art.
Yeah, maybe it's art.
Abstract.
But I mean, she's a wonderful neighbor and, you know, she's really taken Bucksport as her hometown, I think. And it's an honor to have her here and what she's done for that building.
She's one of our biggest advocates in terms of her whole project and how she was treated and working with this community. And, you know, she's got nothing but positives to say about that experience. So it's nice to have that as our... An emissary, certainly as visible and active a woman she is.
Any other discussion items from the council?
One quick one.
Yes, sir.
Just want to ask Chief or anybody, we had any close calls with the new store down there and all the traffic, different patterns and everything coming around? Any complaints or no complaints or anything? Okay. Thanks.
I stopped by there, and he said they were doing it... They were doing very well thus far, lots of business and so...
Okay, no more discussion items. Let's go on to item 14, upcoming public hearings, designation of topics for committee assignments, and scheduling of committee meetings. We do have an upcoming public hearing, which is going to be on the 15th, right? For the easement?
That's not a public hearing. It's just a hearing.
Hearing, okay.
Yes, it's posted.
Okay.
We've got a public hearing on the 22nd.
And we've got a public hearing on the 22nd for the moratorium. And we need a committee assignment for Streets and Roads to discuss flags. You got a date you're interested in?
You guys, would you like to do another one of the meetings, just prior to the meeting, either the 15th or the 22nd?
Maybe just prior to the 15th? Is that enough time?
So say 6:30?
6:30 on the...
15?
15.
Okay, before the next council meeting?
Yeah.
Okay. Any other issues? So scheduling of committee meetings? I don't believe we have any. Is that...
Yeah.
Or ordinance committee for...
Let's just do that July 13th, wherever that first meeting in July is, 6:00.
July 13th, 6:00? For ordinance for Chapter 2 continuation.
Is that reviewing that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Anything else that pops up?
Okay. All right, if nothing else, we'll go on to item 15, which is adjournment. So move. We have a motion and a second for adjournment. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion passes?